Good evening and welcome to the City of Plating Board Thursday, January 23rd, 2025, being held in the Select Board Hearing Room here at Town Hall. We have our folks of your agenda, Mr. Gary, say.
All in favor?
Hi, Bob.
You see, we have listed one person, so I don't have to go there. At 7:30, we have a continued public hearing for the zoning amendments for the annual town meeting. I'm gonna cut this off at an hour. After the last meeting, the town clear curated a host of issues identified in the public hearings from 1/9/2025, and we as a board have got to discuss this all ourselves and decide where we'll then go with this, okay? That's out.
Well, we do have a public hearing.
Yes, and we can really go on.
I'm just saying.
We have four public hearings.
I understand.
Yeah.
But we have.
If, 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 if comments, if nobody has enough comments.
Then we can move on.
Then we'll move on.
But we have to finish those.
Before seven.
Okay. We, we got to start first. So Karen, you want to read the list or you want me to read it?
Uh, whatever you want.
You can be, but you, you call the show list, okay?
All right, so the first major item that we heard last week in the public hearing was short-term rentals. We have written in the zoning bylaw right now that we don't permit short-term rentals in accessory dwelling units. You heard opinions, yes, then people want them, no, people don't want them. The board needs to take a stand on that and make a decision.
Okay, so I want to point out, and I want to reiterate, Ms. Lewis's comment from the last meeting that we had is that this law was put into legislation to provide housing. It is for permanent housing, it is not for economic development, so to speak. So let's keep that in mind as we go forward because the governor wants us to solve the housing crisis. And that's what we're gonna go with, Ms. Lewis's guidance, thank you. Not that I'd be annoyed. So I guess we're gonna open the discussion. Now I'm gonna start with you. How do you feel on the damage issue?
Well, I think as we discussed many times, with the fact that we are supposed to be just adding additional housing, if we keep that in mind and that at the forefront, I am less inclined to get into rental, short-term rentals, long-term rentals, et cetera. To keep what we have with the existing bylaws in place and not change too much else according to the state. It feels like we're already being pressured by the state quite a bit to get changes put in place. So it feels like if we can just meet their minimum requirements and then keep what's best for the town and situat, that's sort of what I.
Okay. Ms. Burby.
I agree with no short term. Also, I still feel very strongly that although the laws is known that there should be an over.
Oh, we'll get, that's further down. Yeah, I just picked this one top.
Fine.
Yep. So you also believe that we should not encourage short-term rentals?
Not at all.
Please, Richard.
I was thinking, I, we, we talked about this a lot when we developed it, that maybe we should just leave the short-term rental issue and et cetera. We should all.
Okay, Ms. Lewis. In my feelings. Okay, so I think that we have reached consensus that we are developing accessory dwelling units for permanent housing and not as a short-term rental become everything. We're all in agreement on that. Excellent.
Well, I think the bottom line here is that we're gonna leave the definition.
As-is.
As-is.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, okay, we'll go on.
All right, so number two, restrictions of the ADU for short-term rental. Primary dwelling would not be impacted. So I need to change 530.2K because that, it was a mistake there. It said, both of them can't be used for short-term rentals, and we know that the primary dwelling, we can't, we can't regularly for primary dwellers.
Okay, so we're all in agreement with that. We have to update 530.2K, but.
Yeah, that came up last meeting, right?
Right, right, I'm just going to, I'm going through all the issues that came up last week before we take any new public comment.
So in each case, there is a designated primary?
Yes.
Any ADU activated?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, there is a, yeah, and the ADU must be supported to primary dwelling.
Correct.
We're all in agreement in that, yeah?
Sure.
Yes, I'm just somewhere in here, and maybe I've missed it. The main dwelling and the ADU have to be held by the same person.
Yeah, I think we talked that later. Okay, we're a little off as well, yeah. Okay, so Karen, we are in agreement that we could revise.
Just update that.
Five.
Number three. Number three, definition of cooking kitchen facilities. The board wanted this definition because we have a problem with some way some of the ADUs are being interpreted now. I think last time somebody implied that a wet bar is a, is a kitchen, and it's not a kitchen. You have to have permanent facilities, and we have the definitions to include what we have in there, including the piping for stove or, piping for stove mainly, because that is considered part of the, part, if the piping's there, it's, it's that stove.
Because for public, accessory dwelling must have a kitchen, it must have a, uh, facilities for a restroom, and it must have a living room. So we need to make sure that what we consider a kitchen is what we all consider a kitchen, which is either refrigerator, at least a stove, or a stove, or whatever. I don't know, my father always told me, oh, you have a kitchen because it came with the house. Now, that's not very nice. So are we all in agreement with that we're going to keep what we have to contribute, yeah, kitchen, that, for me, so, yes, yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, well, I want to go to Ms. Joseph, okay?
All right. The definition of addition. The building commissioners do not like our definition and want it removed. They say the definition proposed exceeds the building code, so they don't like it. So they want it removed from, from our accessory dwelling bylaw.
Okay, can we, can we read what that is?
Yeah.
Right. Sorry, I'm just speaking.
Which one is that?
A dishet.
A dishet.
A walled and roof extension or increase in floor area or height of a building or structure which shares a common wall other than a fire separation wall and which could not exist independent of the original structure. An walled and roof extension which is connected by a fire separation wall or separated by independent perimeter walls is used in structure.
So how does that differ?
What do they, what do they have?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, just saying, throw it out, I, I'm not sure I understand that. How is it, where does it differ?
The definition in building codes is a one-sentence definition, and they, the building commissioner wants the ability to be able to interpret that definition. That's the bottom line.
What do we use the definition for in this?
Well, I mean, we have, I mean, an accessory dwelling could be in addition to, to a house.
Yep.
Um, that's what we use it for this bylaw. Do we 100% need it for this bylaw? No, we don't.
And I was pressured for that meeting, and they were very adamant that this was all but in a well, the state building code, and they truly felt that it was unnecessary for us to have this recorded. And I can tell you, if this is gonna stick to ADU, I'm gonna drop it. Actually, it's, we're too high to help with sentences.
What's the definition, right?
We don't, we don't have.
We don't have a definition because we have a section of, a sentence.
No, no, what's the building code definition?
I don't have.
It's like, it, it's, it's.
It's a very simple, it's a very simple definition. It's a one-line definition. But they, they think this extends the definition, and they don't like it. They don't think that it really pertains to an ADU, and they think there's other implications for other things in town. But I, I agree with Patty that if the bylaw is potentially gonna be sought because of that, then let's, they can write their own definition and propose it another time and another, for another town meeting.
Yeah.
With a break. So are we moving the concept of an addition, or we're just accepting the building department's definition?
We're accepting, basically, the building department's definition, which is the state building code. Because any definitions not referred to in our local bylaw are, are, it says that it's state.
Long as we don't lose that concept.
No, we're not losing, we're not losing the concept. So everyone agrees we remove the definition now.
Yeah, try to modernize, see, I don't think we saw.
There was a question about fees associated with accessory dwellings. I can't speak to any fees from any other departments. I know that our fees are commensurate with the economy, and our fees for accessory dwellings are not assessed.
Nor do I feel that they are unusable, considering.
We should, we lost.
Absolutely, we'll go on with that. Read?
All right, okay. Lot size. The board is not proposing any changes to lot size. We're merely trying to fit the state law into our zoning. An ADU has to, has to meet all the requirements for a primary dwelling with regard to setback and lot area. 530.2O says you can't have a detached ADU on a 5,000-square-foot lot, and 10,000 square foot is needed for detached ADU. Some of the discussion was related to why couldn't we change the zoning so that maybe you could have 12,000-square-foot lots? Well, that's not what we're trying to do right now. We are trying to just incorporate the state definition of ADU into our bylaw. And, you know, lot size, we, we add some, we added a couple extra criteria for now. We'll have to see what the regulations say, and if we have to strike them at the end. After the regs come out, then we'll strike them, you know? We'll, we'll know before February 13th what we have to do on that.
So that everybody knows we are not redefining zones. We are, we are trying to fit our zone into what they require.
Well, the current bylaw doesn't try to redefine zoning either.
Knock out that, absolutely not.
So we should, we shouldn't go there.
You should not go there.
All right. Number seven, if the board can fully, fully restrict an ADU to just one ADU on a lot, is that what the board wants? There's some, there's some suggestion in the regulations right now that you might need, you might have to have more than one ADU on a lot. And so this was gonna be refined in the regulations, but does the board just want one ADU per lot?
I would say in keeping with the previous, that we're not changing zoning by this thing. I don't think we were intending to change the original accessory dwelling bylaw other than what is needed, what is required by the state. That's not a part of the state that we stipulate, because we've only allowed one ADU.
Right, we've only allowed one ADU for single-family residential lots.
Yep.
And so the board wants to keep that as-is.
Yes.
That would be my.
If we can't.
Well, again, it's keeping with the characters of the town. We don't want to make it too dense, which is why, you know, our job as elected officials is to, and we're not appointed, we are elected, is to make sure that we work with the town and that we do what the town would like us to do in the very best that we can. And we have heard loud and clear that people do not want the character of the town. We ought to so be, yeah, but this will allow us to do that.
All right, another issue that was raised last time, or is ADUs will have an impact on infrastructure. Yes, we know an ADU will have an impact on infrastructure. Title V still must be met. Sewer permits will be needed. We can require proof of septic sewage permit, but their domain is not in the planning boards' regulation. We can require Title V compliance, we can require compliance with the Wetlands Protection Act.
Right, and absent demonstration of compliance, we don't have proof of.
We can, we can say it's required prior to a building permit.
Right.
Right.
So if it never materializes.
Then they don't get a building permit.
But I feel like that needs to be part of the review of an accessory dwelling.
Right, and so we, right now, accessory dwelling goes to all departments, and all departments give you comments back. And so the board of health will give you comments, and the sewer division will give you comments, not on ADUs, but on every project that cycling reviews we send out. We get comments, hopefully, from most departments, and we, you know, we put them into the record, we put them into, if they need a condition like water, it says all requirements must be water department requirements. So we put stuff in the decisions to, to, to balance that.
I guess what I was saying is, in the review process, we just need to make sure that whoever's proposing it understands that they have, provide some indication of response on how they're gonna meet these things.
We do that now, right?
Right.
Yeah, no, we do that now, okay? Yeah. Okay, we'll go right on.
A comment was made that more people should be involved in creating the bylaws, realtors, et cetera, and laypeople. The board has been working on this bylaw and have discussed it at almost every meeting since August, when the regulations came out. The committee has consisted of the town planner, the planning board chair, a member of the zoning board, with input from town council and the building commissioners. The TA has been involved in some of the meetings. Several members of the select board and advisory board were sat in on some meetings. So elected and appointed officials have been informed. There was a public workshop in December, and there will be several sessions of this public hearing. We've also received some feedback from a developer. I do feel that we sought comments and, and got comments involved town departments, et cetera.
I have to agree because I have to be at all those meetings. And there's a lot, but we do a lot of webinars more than I can structure. Everybody agreed that.
I think it should also be, we're not creating bylaw in the whole law, right? We have an existing bylaw, and what we're trying to do is sort of adjust that bylaw as long as the current law. And I, I agree with you, Karen, that we've solved it, and we keep on how that should be integrated.
Last time, there was a reference made to impact on taxes, and so I, I went and asked the assessor what the impact of an ADU on taxes. ADUs come in essentially three forms, a finished basement or addition to an existing home, living area over a garage, and a separate small dwelling. In the first two cases, the additional taxes are minimal, averaging 1,000 to 3,000, 1,000 to 2,000 per year, and these structures of the majority of the existing ADUs. A detached structure depends on the size and the quality of the structure. In these cases, the average additional taxes has been about $2,600 per year for new construction. So we have some higher look with an average tax increase of around 3,000. It depends on the size, but an ADU is not gonna add significantly to the tax, to the tax base of the town, is what the assessor indicated to me.
I mean, my understanding is the way, if you put it in a kitchen, whatever you put for your building permit, what you write down, he's reassessing the property for that amount.
I don't think it's necessarily that exact amount.
Which usually.
Well, I, I, I don't know.
My understanding.
I, I didn't ask that, I only asked the impact for an ADU, and this is what I.
I would just make sure that it's treated any.
I will ask.
Position. If he's gonna do that to single-family homes that are building bathrooms and kitchens, he should be doing the same for his doing for a house. Sense to me, but.
I will ask. A comment was made about the character of the town. The planning board is trying to protect the character of town by keeping the zoning changes for, for ADUs in line with the law and what is practical. The board understands the changes can be significant in some neighborhoods, but is trying to, is complying with the law. I mean, that's just a statement. A comment was made about unreasonable regulations. The board is allowed to have reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures and determining yard sizes, lot areas, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage. The proposed bylaw is in compliance with those aspects. An issue was raised on 530.2L where we indicate additional fencing or landscaping may be required to protect abutting properties. I've discussed that at this point in time. We discussed it with town council, and town council said, well, let's keep it in until after we find out what the final regulations say. So does the board want to keep that in?
Well, yeah, because I think, you know, if you like your zoning for a reason reconstruct, they will put a landscaping plan. So, but people say it's not an individual house, that's not true, they can do that. Yeah, it's another house on your property, don't you want to be protected from the weather, Governor, that, yeah, or that story, you know? Whatever. Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Please say. Rebecca?
Yeah, this would be for traditions or other building.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem. I don't think, I think we should, I, I think what will happen is when somebody comes in, such an accessory dwelling proposal, the neighbors will want to help, what are they doing this, or help me maintain my privacy, so I think we should have a mechanism to discuss that.
All right, and the last issue that was raised in the public hearing or in the correspondence that I had is we may need to change the ending language for ADU, attached, detached, whether the definition of mobilized manufactured homes or mobile homes is finalized. We, we exclude trailers, we just, we may need to say manufactured homes or mobile homes there. But that's a wait we see till after the regs are finalized. I went on the state website today, they say the regulations are supposed to be published in the Massachusetts Register on January 31st. So that would mean that they're published prior to supposedly being effective on February 2nd. They, they have to publish them for them to be effective, so.
It's that's.
Everything is, everything is aligned with what they've been telling us that, that is gonna happen, that the law takes effect February 2nd.
Does the Massachusetts, still come up in people form? That's a old guy, yeah.
I don't know if it still comes up.
Go to the library and check. I'm just gonna check that in every week. All right, I'll, I'll look at it online.
So we did get a, we did get one written comment that I forwarded to the board today. It was from the Water Resources Commission, and I, I know Bruce is here, so I'm gonna let him speak to his comment, and then I can give a rebuttal to his comment.
So you forwarded that, I'm sorry.
I did, I forwarded it. I don't remember what time I forwarded it, but I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Bruce Larchey come on. Since Bruce is here, I'm gonna let him discuss his comment. I didn't send it to everybody, but did you find it?
Yeah, I just didn't look at it.
Yeah, well, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't expect you would see, yeah.
Hello.
Hello, Bruce Arbinis, Water Resources Commission, 23 Gannapastrae. Make the first start by thanking the planning board for holding these open sessions and keeping the best interests of the community in mind. So I think, as you know, the Water Resource Commission is concerned about ADUs, dramatic increase in ADUs. Because we have such limited surface water, we're very susceptible to droughts, and unfortunately, this is an odd year in the prior for even years with fed droughts, so maybe we'll be okay this year. But again, significant increase in population means significant increase in the draw on water. So as a general statement, you know, the concern. The group, the commission, talked about a number of things related to ADUs and came up with some suggestions for consideration, and I'll just rethrow those very quickly here. So existing water capacity issues that were made, the town is actively looking for other water sources. That's an ongoing thing, nothing around the corner, they're looking for wells, again, other sources. Mentioned the frequency of droughts, rising demand for new construction, obviously, ADUs fall under that category. And the greater focus on tourism, hoping create more economic development in town. Again, those are things that will increase water use. The, obviously, the state's mandating this, so we can't block it. But some considerations for you in terms of requirements or for the proposed changes include, and these, some of these are more general, mandate energy-efficient building requirements for ADUs, provide oversight of any ADUs being considered in close proximity to the Water Resource Protection District, wetlands, marshes, et cetera. And one of the suggestions from the group is to perform an annual fire marshal inspection of revenue-generating ADUs constructed after February 2nd to ensure continued compliance. And again, thank you for your having these open discussions and for letting us make comments.
Well, thank you for your response, and we have any discussions that's, if you may, so Karen, you can respond to this.
We appreciate your comment, so we really do, except we can't, we can't be, we can't say you can't have an ADU because there's no water or this limited water supply, we, we just can't, we can't do that. We understand water is an issue, and we, I mean, in our comments to the state, you know, we raised, we know there's infrastructure issues in the town, and we keep raising them. With regard to energy-efficient building requirements, that's the responsibility of the building code. That's not the planning board's responsibility to regulate, it's not zoning's responsibility to regulate. Supposedly, the 10th edition of the building code is going into effect on July 1st. With regard to wetlands, et cetera, Title V and Wetlands Protection Act must be followed. This gives no exception to that. And the planning board has a process, there's gonna be a site plan review process, and in site plan review, the applications are vetted to all town departments. So there, there is gonna be a site plan review process. And fire inspections, that, that's not in the planning board's purview either, so we can't, we can't regu, we can't regulate that.
So Bruce, I want you to know that I think that all the state hears is that you get these by right. The stuff that's never said out loud, which is what means they must meet all the town bylaws as well, but she obviously forgets to say that. So it isn't just by right, you'll have to also conform to what it is that the town is imposing on you. So we appreciate all of this discussed stuff that we never think about, it's just out of our purview. But we make sure you, you read out. But we make sure you read our decisions here pretty thorough and they have this, any little thing that you have to check off, or if you had to watch, so.
So I can tell you that when when an application comes in, you know, we're gonna look at, do they meet the Water Resource Protection District requirements? We always look at that for every project. And if we don't, then I'm gonna I'm gonna tell the building commission, this doesn't meet it. And so, you know, try to work with somebody along the way to get them to meet it. So, you know, if they have to have some type of infiltration device, well, it's gonna be three feet above. The estimated season will high ground wire. We we look at that section of design zoning bylaw and we take it very seriously.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your thoughts and comments.
Chair Lambert, you do have an online.
Well, I'm gonna take this in the.
No, no, I understand.
So anybody in the room, so we end up with our overall discussion of what was raised in the law. Public meeting, is there anybody in the room that has a thought that they would like to report to us? No? Nope. Okay, then we will go to Zoom land.
Good evening. Mary Ann Lewis, eighteen Lighthouse Road in Situ. Am I up?
Yes, you're here. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. I apologize. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard again this evening. And I appreciate the board's time. I apologize. I tuned in late. I had a little technical difficulty. And so Karen, I I apologize if I missed your part, beginning part of your introduction. Did you mention the term of short term rental of the thirty one days at the beginning?
Yes, yes, we did. And the board decided that it's best to keep the bylaw as currently written with ADUs not being able to be used for short term rentals.
And that also, it's, well, last time we met, it also included the primary dwelling. Has that changed since the last meeting?
It will change in the revised bylaw edition. We will not be regulating the primary dwelling.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I wanted to just offer a couple of thoughts in thinking more about it and also on the heels of the last meeting. I know one of the comments, all the questions that I asked at the last meeting regarded whether or not the ADUs would be counted counted towards our housing stock as far as the state was concerned on the forty B and and everyone had a, you know, a sort of surprise reaction, not a positive one either about that not being included in the forty B number. But upon further reflection, I actually just wanted to offer that I think that's probably a good thing because if there's not an affordable component to the ADUs, we actually wouldn't want logically our our number of housing stock to go up because that would move the needle on the forty B percentage requiring us to build additional housing units. So I don't think it's a bad thing necessarily that the ADUs aren't going to be deemed part of our overall housing number. So just for further contemplation by everybody, you know, I think I'd need, I think everyone's initial sort of knee jerk reaction was that's a negative thing. But upon further reflection, I actually think that's a good thing. That was one comment. The other comment I I have for this evening would be, I would encourage, I know that you folks usually post, well, I just learned this, that usually post the board's agenda on the preceding Friday. I would encourage on the website to add, since this is such a significant zoning, you know, change and, you know, something new on our plate with the mandated by right ADUs with the new zone, with the new housing law that the state passed is if you could post the the next public comment period a little earlier, I think that would be helpful to folks in terms of planning. And also maybe encourage you to post on the website that you're inviting written comments and where folks could send that to, whether that's, you know, simply to email Karen or what have you. I think those would be two two important changes that would have a big impact, but, you know, not a lot of effort on the front end in terms of setting that up.
We don't control IT, unfortunately.
But we've stated that comments can be always given to the planning office. That's been stated at the last meeting and it'll be stated again tonight. Anybody can submit a comment to the planning office.
And I know that and everyone in the room that's listening knows that. I just think if someone's browsing on your website, they might not know that. So again, I think it's, it should be.
On the website. It's already on the.
It's on the website. Then the town administrator mentioned it in his weekly report this week as well.
And that's great. And I'm offering just additional items that I think could encourage more participation. So this is the public comment period. And I'm offering an opinion about what I think would be minimal effort on the front end and have increased effort and participation on the back end.
Okay.
So I think that's what I'm offering. So lastly, for tonight, I would suggest that under the five thirty section at the end where you folks, you know, I did catch that part of it, where you talked about screening and fencing and and again, your language says shall, it does not say may, which mandates that the board contemplate and can make those considerations. And I would like to articulate a very strong opinion that I have that if an ADU, much like a primary dwelling with or without an ADU component to it, meets zoning setbacks, height restrictions, side setbacks, front setbacks, back setbacks, rear setbacks, rather, et cetera. There is no purview that the plan, the planning board has either they're under a discretionary or a mandated directive to require a homeowner to add additional very expensive landscaping, fencing, privacy, trees, et cetera. Just because a neighbor might show up and decide that they want someone to do that. So I don't think it's a good idea from the citizen's point of view to have any board have that authority to do that. I think it's an overreach and it's not, doesn't exist when someone meets setbacks of our otherwise zoning codes to allow that type of overreach and discretion that could end up having very expensive implications for folks that are trying to add additional housing for, you know, whether that be aging parents or kids that can't afford it, et cetera. So I know that the board in the past has made those decisions, I think, without that authority and and impose those additional expensive directives on, you know, contractual directives on applicants. And I just don't think that that's a good idea. So I just want to reiterate my opposition to that component of that section.
Do we know it? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to say? Yes, ma'am.
No, I didn't come to.
You're naming your.
Oh, Joanna Whitehoff. I live at one fifty fourth Turner Road and I am a member of the Water Resources Commission, S. W. And forgive me because I wasn't at the earlier hearing and I'm just looking at these documents. I looked at them long and hard. So this five thirty point two O, which is the area of the lot, which is a recommend recommendation of the planning board to the bylaws. Is that correct?
Yes, this would be a part of the bylaw, the new bylaw.
The new bylaw?
Right.
And so that that seems like a good thing to be. You're not taking that off the table. You're gonna, yeah, leave that off the table. That's all I want to say. Have people been? I mean, I'm actually surprised there hasn't been more. He would cry about it.
Probably. Unfortunately, unfortunately or unfortunately, Ms. Joseph deals with this every single day in the office. So there is a lot of people crying. It's just not in public forum.
I mean, it's it's really, it feels to me like the only way to protect the land from being overly saturated with building materials.
Where do we get that?
Yeah.
Great.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Anybody else? Wow, so somebody else up there?
Yeah, I think that the regulations are due to come out January thirty first, one R and so we are going to continue the public hearing February thirteenth so that we can have time to look at the final regulations, take comments that have been considered and then on the February thirteenth meeting, we'll have a revised draft of the bylaw.
Oh, the word, the point of it ends. Okay, thank you. So I will go, I don't know if I can see the dashboard here as well. I would like to. Nope. So we're gonna continue the public.
Wait, I have a motion. I move to continue the public hearing for the zoning amendments, the twenty twenty five annual town meeting October February thirteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty P. M. Set it. All in favor?
Thank you. If you ride along. You have a seven P. M. public hearing for special permit and major site plan review for small cell wireless facility. Oh, Linda, I'll look right away. We have Fort Worth Street. Good evening, all.
In accordance with Mass Penrile's chapter forty A, section nine and eleven and some bylaw section nine thirty point four wireless communication antenna utility poles, section seven seventy site plan review and nine forty referrals. The planning board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, January twenty third, twenty twenty five at seven o'clock P. M. In the select board hearing room at City Town Hall located at City. Chief Justice Highway. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted by applicant New Singular Wireless PCS LLC DBA AT&amp;T on special permit slash major site review for installation of a small cell attachment equipment on a replacement utility pole, number one, pole number six dash eighty four on the right of way and Fort Worth Street, a public way. Pole is owned by National Grid. Plans are available for review in the planning board office, town hall. Buyers and other interested parties are invited to attend this public hearing.
Good evening. Good evening, guys.
Good evening and happy new year.
Happy new year.
I just created myself. My name is Evan Carrick. It's P. A. Arlie. I'm in front of Brown Rubik. One parent, son in Boston,选择了s. Sitting on the left is Kevin Perrier. We should look for Andy Everly. Say he's radio frequency engineer. You have a couple of folks on the screen. Don Hayes is here, who produced the missions report and questions and Vin Poppett from Centerline, who private site for AT&amp;T as part of this application. So I am here representing New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, the conference at AT&amp;T. Just to give a brief recap, we were here, I guess, a whole over a year ago. We had a couple of these small cell facilities. They were in international areas. Neighborhoods. We had some opposition from some of those neighbors. Planning board asked us to move it for other locations, which we did. We replaced one of those sites with the Jericho Road small cell facility, which was not approved last year. In this instance, we had proposed Saturday fifteen Allen Place, which was near a Horizon installation. Again, it was close to the residences. There was some concern. So we did some further digging and we did locate a site that we're proposing this evening near Fort Brook Street. It's located in Business District. Can I share my screen?
Sure.
You are a host.
Wow.
And I think Karen and I went down to look at this other coldest day of the year. It was pretty cold. Whistled off the water. And then just click on your.
Yeah.
You know, this, I just can't operate my mic. I got a mouse.
So the pole is, you can see in the center of this. The existing pole is located there at the corner of Front Brook. In this instance, we're not replacing the pole as we do with Jericho. We can use the existing pole. It has the structural capability to accommodate the antenna. The installation itself, as soon as I get my mask put in. Will likewise look familiar to the most installations that we have brought people aboard in the past. The antennas, twenty quarter antenna. It's located at the top of the pole on a mountain bracket. We do have to maintain some distance from the existing wires. Cables will run from the antenna down the pole and conduit to the equipment cabinet, which you see there. It's about seven and a half feet above a brown level and the shut off switch and then the electric meter at about eight feet above brown level. On the right hand side of the elevation is the existing pole with keys and I have. So nothing much has changed with respect to the design. Gonna switch my doctor.
You know, Mr. Parry, since I've met you, always I do is look at photo posts. That's all I do. I have a top of photo.
It's a lot easier from that side. So this is our photograph and photo simulation that we provided to the board. This is obviously the existing pole. Scroll down. The antenna will be up on the top, as I mentioned, with the mountain bracket, the equipment cabinet, meter and shut off switch. I do know the last time the board asked us to use a brown color, which we can do, as it do come in light gray is typical favorite, but I know in the proposed conditions that a brown is preferred, call it in this instance, and we can do that.
I'm sorry, I I can't really see that. I had I'm not. Is the is the pole, is the box on on the side, the fence side?
Yeah, let me get it in the. So you'll see the, if you take a look kind of in the, if you could see it.
Can you orient the box so it's the least visible from? Yeah, I just think, you know, it's it's a very visible spot.
Turn it.
Right, just turn it, you know, sixty degrees.
Okay, the towards the stone wall. If you take a look in the middle, that's the orientation there, towards the stone wall.
Sure, don't wait for.
Let me just, I'm gonna ask the podcasters on, hey, Vin, did you hear the question?
I did add, yeah. And so you'll have the the way it's oriented there, the meter box per National Grid standards needs to read against the flow of traffic so that when National Grid walks up to the meter and reads the the usage, that they're not, they don't have their back faced the traffic. That's.
I think the meter can stay. I'm just talking about the box. Just from a visual perspective.
Vin, can we shift and the the wires are gonna get longer, right?
Yeah, it it does need to be contiguous. So the meter, the disconnect and the shroud need to be in a in a linear line, right? They ultimately, the orientation needs to be the same for all.
What orientation on the back?
Why do they need to be linear?
That that's just National Grid and Verizon standard. That's how it's, that's how. That's how it's, that's how we're, we're required to design per their standard.
So I think what Mr. Prichard is asking you is, can you take the whole thing and move it sixty degrees to the back? The whole thing? Move that little gray line around the back?
Yeah, that, the gray line in, in the picture?
Yeah. And all those boxes.
Yeah, that, that's how it's showing right now.
We're just trying to minimize the visual impact of these big ugly boxes on poles right in the center of town.
So where do you want the box, you want the box facing the stone wall?
Opposite the street. Yeah, opposite.
Opposite the street.
Have the pole act as a bit of a shield on the box. If you scroll through the other picture, it looks like it might already be there.
Yeah, that's why I thought it was already there.
This is what I'm looking.
It's not.
Oh, I was.
This right here is different.
I'm ready right here. It's different.
On that, right there, it looks like it's.
Oh, that's good.
I think that's how you guys are asking for it. Can you go back to that? Which one? The illustration, the, or the poles?
Oh, that's there. Okay.
That was, it looks like, that was like how you're asking for it.
Yeah. I think it's the way that my pictures are taken. Yes, we have, we're all looking at the same picture now. Okay. I think it's the same picture. Yeah, it was on. It was great. Here.
Yeah, I think that's the same.
Yeah.
Your front street.
Yeah.
Well, I'm saying just turn with the box.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a big ask.
What Mr. Prichard is looking for is the box to face the window, which it looks like it's doing this. I think it looks like it's going that way.
No, I think it's, I think it's just.
I guess maybe the question is.
Can you, can you make it work that way? Let's just, let's just say that.
Or, or is maybe, my question is, what is the proposed, if, if we're all, the, the pictures are confusing?
Yeah.
What is the, if you go back to that architectural? Yeah, so what, what is on the left there? Is that, is that facing the, the street is facing towards you? I guess that's the question right there.
Yes, so that's the pole.
So that's right here.
Take a look at the orientation, right in the middle. No, move over.
The box.
Right there. Nope.
To the right.
Go to your right. Keep going, keep going, keep, go down to the box. There you go. So you see the pole and then the orientation that you put in.
So pole and then orientation is this way.
Correct.
Yeah, so I think we're saying, can you, can you rotate this ninety degrees this way, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's facing this way.
So what we're saying, National, is National Grid has to have it exposed.
Right.
On the side. And I think it would be really difficult to service the equipment. It looks like you have to get up on the stone wall.
Yeah.
I'm not worried about servicing equipment.
Well, we are.
I know you are, but I'm not worried about that, right? That's, that's your job.
Well, that might be, that might be private.
What it looks like.
That might be private property.
So I'm asking if we can orient it.
Again, Vin, would we have to go back to National? I guess we'd have to determine if the stone walls are in the public right of way because we can't stand on it. Well, if it's private property, what's that?
We won't tell.
Well, if it's not, we don't have to.
Yeah, so the, the standard is that the, the meter and the equipment be, it's all one linear. It's meter, disconnect, shroud, all one linear fashion of the pole. And the meter has to face opposite the oncoming traffic. So a National Grid person reading the meter has to stand looking at traffic coming in front of them. That's how the power, all of the, all of the electric companies have that, that same standard.
The answer is no, they don't really care.
No.
I can see other people's status.
Any questions, any other questions before Mr. Chalow committed to say?
In general, or?
In general, in this.
In, in general, on the, on the request from me, AT&amp;T was actually spawned by a request from the Towns IP Department. Introduce myself, Mike Chalow, Towns IP Director. We've asked for increased coverage in certain areas around towns. Second, location that they are accommodating for us. We have a particular problem, not with cell reception, but with data throughput and with, in our police and fire vehicles. Again, this is one of many areas in town that we have low, low data bandwidth. So it is upon our request that AT&amp;T is accommodating this. So it's definitely has a significant benefit for public safety and a side benefit to the residents. Any more of these requests? I, I, going back a couple of years ago, we highlighted all the low, low throughput areas. And AT, it's up to AT&amp;T and how they want to address those. We haven't asked for any numbers specifically. So we still have low coverage areas from Lighthouse Road all down Haveling, east of Haveling, so coast to coast. We have low cell coverage areas in Hummer Rock. But it's again, it's going to be up to AT&amp;T and what they will accommodate for us.
Can I ask some stuff because it's one sided water?
I would, yeah, I mean, my guess is, and I think the experts here could probably answer it better is, you know, they don't want to invest a ton of money up against the water because fish don't have cell phones, so they don't really care about them. So, you know, they're not, they're not really going to build out an infrastructure along the water. That's my guess.
Thank you. I appreciate moving it under that name over there, it was.
You are.
Yeah. Did you know that was quite contentious?
I kind of understand that.
So this is less housing right directly around, maybe just.
Oh, I will say it's a preferred location because of the elevated height, but we, you know, we are.
Well, you appreciate that. Thank you.
It looks like it substantially increases the coverage.
Without question. That's, I did, I did pull out that.
All right.
Let me just, I did have to propose when Mike started talking. So this is the existing coverage for AT&amp;T. You see the black, that blue is in the circle. And this isn't covered.
So much better. I can't see that.
Much better in the area. I would add that, you know, we did get public, we did get favorable comments from police and fire. They're probably first that, that AT&amp;T offers, so. You have a structural report, as we did last time, showing that the existing pole intolerated. You know, what, you know, most of these that I do, we replace the pole. In this instance, I could call somewhat newer from what I can see. So it'll accommodate the, the equipment, which, you know, which is great, less of a, you know, construction issue, so. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions. Kevin is here for any questions regarding coverage.
Just, just a question on this map. Does this include the other ones we recently approved?
Uh, no, it, it's, it's just slightly to the north of this.
So the stuff to the north of this is really, at this point, green, not orange or whatever. Where you can install, where you're installing the other.
So the, the coverage from Jericho doesn't come down into with map cells?
Doesn't come into it at all?
It doesn't. Not, not in this frequency.
Because the Jericho stops it.
I'm sorry.
The Jericho stops it?
Um, it just runs out of steam. Yeah, I mean, with, with a low height, it's a telephone pole.
It's amazing.
Yes.
So much.
Yes, I, I, I look at telephone poles all the time since Mr. Perry has, again, given me about what's on telephone poles and every telephone pole in town has something orange.
This one doesn't.
Yeah, but there's one, it gets cold as anything, you gave a bunch of look at it, but there was nothing orange.
You know, they put them up for the wires and transponders. And, you know, some of the other poles are done as, you know, poles to support those other ones. Uh, you know, insulator wires to bring in main power to houses and businesses. But I told you, you'll notice more telephone poles and you'll start seeing these little, you know, antennas on the top where there are a little bit.
Like I said, uh, people think, oh, it's only with different telephone poles, it's not the stuff of the telephone pole. Anybody else have anything to say?
You received no negative comments on this project. Excellent.
All right. Yes, we're ready. We're ready. Thank you. Ready? Ready.
I move to make the following findings of fact concerning installation of small cell equipment on utility pole number six dash eight four and right of way across near Fort Brooks Street. One, on November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, D B A, A T and T, apply for special permit slash major site plan review for installation of a small cell unit on the existing utility pole number six dash eight four within the public right of way near Fort Brooks Street under section seven thirty point four, section seven thirty point two A and B, paragraphs one, three, and five, section seven seventy and section nine seventy of the City Zone bylaw. Two, the existing pole is in the public right of way of Brooks Street near Fort Brooks Street, which is located in the business and village business overlay cell districts. Three, the applicant has submitted a letter from National Grid, which indicates they have entered into a pole attachment agreement and consent to file for permits to AT&amp;T to install, attach, maintain, repair, upgrade, and use wireless communications equipment and appliances on certain utility poles subject to their agreement, including initial installation, ongoing maintenance and upgrades or replacements of set equipment. Four, the proposed installation location, the small cell antenna will be on an existing utility pole in this location. The top of the existing pole is thirty one feet, two inches A G L. Five, the application indicates small cell unit from AT&amp;T is strategically installed antennas in high demand locations while improving wireless performance and while mitigating visual impacts to installation of the as proposed small cell antenna system. Six, according to certification in the radio frequency report, proposed AT&amp;T small cell facility near Fort Brooks Street, City Harbor, City Mash, dated October twenty four, twenty twenty four, Kevin Roar, radio frequency engineer for AT&amp;T, small cell configuration was chosen to achieve the best balance between coverage and capacity objectives while minimizing aesthetic impact on the town of City, while complying with applicable laws and regulations. The utility pole selected is the best available and feasible structure that will meet AT&amp;T's coverage objectives while complying with City Zone bylaw's site policies. The certification indicates that the low power facility will meet all applicable FCC regulations regarding exposure to RF emissions and other matters and achieve an optimal balance between meeting coverage and capacity objectives and minimizing the impact of the town of City while complying with all applicable laws and regulations. Seven, the small cell unit will consist of a fourteen point five inch diameter by twenty four inch high single antenna mounted on the existing pole with associated wires, cables, dip flexor, inverter, and electrical meter as depicted on the plans submitted with the application. The top of the existing utility pole will, with proposed antenna mounted on top, will be thirty four feet, two inches in height at ground level. The antenna is less than ten feet in height and meets the requirements of section seven thirty point four and seven thirty point two A of the City Zone bylaw. An equipment cabinet, twenty four inches wide by twenty inches deep and forty eight inches high will be mounted on the utility pole at about eleven point five feet A G L with a disconnect switch and an electrical meter at eight feet A G L. A grounding rod will be installed at the base of the pole. AT&amp;T has provided information that the existing pole is structurally sound and capable of supporting the loads created by the antenna as indicated in section seven thirty two B one of the Zone bylaw. The plan shows the existing utility pole and proposed equipment shall comply with the standards specified in applicable industry, state, and federal codes. The application indicates that the proposed antenna shall be a neutral, non-inflictive color and that AT&amp;T will work with or on a suitable color. This will meet the requirement that the antenna, antenna be painted or colored to blend with the structure. This meets the standards of seven, section seven thirty point two B point three of the City Zone bylaw. Requirement in antenna mounted on a structure shall be colored or painted to blend with the structure. Ten, the applicant has submitted the following evidence to support the demonstration for the need for the antenna to provide significant improvement in network coverage capacity. A, the applicant's FCC license to operate. B, a radio frequency report, proposed AT&amp;T small cell facility near Fort Brooks Street, City Harbor, City Mash, dated October twenty four, twenty twenty four, with a certification from Kevin Roar, radio frequency engineer, stating, one, the location and configuration is chosen to achieve optimal balance between meeting coverage and capacity objectives and minimizing the impact of the town of City while complying with all applicable laws and regulations. Two, the low power facilities will comply with all applicable FCC regulations regarding exposure to RF emissions and other matters. Three, the proposed facility is feasible, appropriate, and will improve wireless communication services in the area. See, a letter from Edward D. Harre, junior S Q of Brown Rudnick L O P, detailing their request for special permit and major site plan review for small cell wireless communication antenna slash facility on an existing utility pole in the public right of way. The pole number plus dash eighty four in Fort Brooks Street, including compliance with the required standards. The D, the applicant provided coverage maps with current AT&amp;T coverage along Front Street and proposed coverage along Front Street and provided an interpretation of such maps that they testify, demonstrate a significant need for the proposed antenna. E, the applicant provided a site selection analysis, pole feasibility assessment, node one dash C R N R C T V S S H R O one, supporting location for the proposed small cell facility on pole six dash eight four near Fort Brooks Street. F, the applicant provided a structural analysis reported by Centerline dated September ninth, twenty twenty four. G, the applicant provided a report by radiation safety specialist Donald L. Hayes, junior C H P, regarding the installation of an AT&amp;T mobility omnidirectional canister antenna and associated equipment comprising a small cell S C P W S facility to be mounted on an existing utility pole near Fort Brooks Street in City Mash. This information meets the requirements of section seven thirty of the City Zone bylaw, demonstration of need. Eleven, the application meets section seven seventy point one of the City Zone bylaw sections A through J and has one, the proposed installation of small cell attachment will enable a more reliable and improved wireless service along Front Street in City addressing coverage and capacity network requirements in the least intrusive way it can. Two, small cell equipment will not adversely impact the neighborhood because the use will not produce unreasonable noise, smoke, odors, waste, flare, or significant amounts of traffic. The small cell will be mounted on an existing pole in the business district and will comply with all applicable laws and codes. Three, the small cell attachment will be mounted on an existing unmanned utility pole that is of passive use in the public right of way and will not produce significant traffic. During construction, proper traffic safety procedures will be followed and enforced with applicable requirements. Four, the small cell will be located in the public right of way and does not be in any safety issues referenced by the bylaw. Five, the small cell will be unmanned, so there is no need for sewage or waste disposal. The small cell does not require fire or police protection as it has patio monitoring equipment and can detect malfunction. Six, there will be no change to surface and stormwater drainage as a result of the small cell. Seven, there is no cut and fill of destruction of other features, including trees and stone walls from the small cell installation. And eight, the obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible, whatever. Start my page.
Obstruction of scenic views from publicly accessible locations is minimized by installing a proposed small cell equipment closely mounted on top of an existing pole. Nine, no parking is required for the small cell facilities in the public right of way. Any business. Any business to the site will be done in accordance with the applicable procedures regarding public right.
Okay. Ten, the small cell will be located on an existing pole in public right of way and will not adversely impact existing traffic patterns. While the application meets the requirements of the Situate Zone Bylaw section seven thirty point four and section seven seventy for a wireless communication antenna on a utility pole. Can I ask one question? It's all right, I'll keep going. I just need a drink of water.
Can I ask one question? Do you mandate that public be mounted on pole?
Why? You're saying put brown on it?
Saying has to match blend in with the existing pole.
But isn't the pole turn gray?
If you guys want it gray, we'll change it to gray.
I'm just asking because I feel like...
If you want it gray, we'll change it to gray. There'll be...wait till we get to condition two.
Condition two. I get that, but I think it should be pink.
Okay.
I mean, red.
That's not getting crazy now.
You know, pink. Now we'll see it. All right?
My word's fair.
Bye-bye. Decision. A motion was duly made and seconded to approve the special permit and major site plan review for the installation of small cell equipment on existing utility pole number six dash eighty-four. I will know that forever. In the right of way near Fort Brooks Street with the following conditions. One, except for any changes necessary to meet these conditions, any construction shall conform to the plans entitled AT&amp;T Site ID CRAM-RCTV SSH-01, Fort Brooks Street, Situate, Mass., sheets T dash one, C dash one, A dash one, A dash two, and A dash three, revised and dated eleven six twenty-four by Central Line Communications of Westbridge Drive, Mass., and stamped by Derek J. Fizer, P.E. For the existing pole, the small cell unit installed shall want to feed the height of thirty-four feet, temperatures above ground level. The color of the small cell unit antenna shall be brown to match the existing pole color.
Does the board want it brown or do you want it gray?
That's why it doesn't match the existing pole color. I don't know what color that is.
So, why don't I just say it shall match the existing pole color? We'll take the color out.
Take brown out. We should never know. Subject exchange. Three, the proposed small cell facility includes installing one cylindrical antenna, fourteen point five inches diameter by twenty-four inches, at a top height of thirty-four feet, two inches at ground level, one equipment cabinet twenty-four inches wide by twenty inches deep and forty-eight inches tall mounted eleven point five feet above ground level with associates, wires, cables, diplexer, converter, and electrical meter to an existing thirty-one feet, two inches AGL pole as detailed in the drawings referenced in item one above. For the applicant, shall maintain small cell antenna system in good working order and appearance. Pursuant to FCC licensing, the applicant is required to ensure that at all times all radio equipment operating at the proposed communication facility result in radio frequency exposure levels compliant with all applicable FCC requirements. An annual statement of compliance shall be submitted by AT&amp;T to the planning board by June thirtieth of each year. Six, all antennas and equipment not in use for a period of six months or more shall be removed from a replacement pole at the owner or operator's expense. Seven, installation of the antenna and associated equipment shall not begin prior to seven a.m. weekdays and eight a.m. on Saturdays, shall cease no later than seven p.m. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal slash federal holidays. Construction includes idle home vehicles, delivery of materials to the location, and all other construction activities. Eight, any excavation in the town of Situate right of way shall be done in accordance with town standards and a street opening permit will be required by the city W. Any damage done to property during installation must be repaired to its original condition. Now, in subject to applicable federal law, the applicant shall comply with all applicable requirements of the select board, building department, fire department, water department, conservation commission, planning board, and other town agencies. Ten, the planning board may require onsite inspection for conformance to the approved plans and these conditions prior to operation of the small cell unit. Eleven, this special permit and major site plan review shall last two years from the date of its issuance. Substantial use or construction has commenced prior to that time. Twelve, town of Situate reserves the right to review compliance with this approval and associated conditions at any time. Thirteen, subject to applicable federal law, the applicant shall provide a fourteen-day notice to the planning board for any proposed upgrade or changes to the small cell antenna system that is approved herein. Section numbers shall include a supplemental of impacts and litigation to those changes, including but not limited to any changes to visual impact, structure, antenna system, as required in accordance with section seven thirty point four. Such changes can be reviewed and approved by the town planner or at the discretion of the board may require a meeting with the planning board. Fourteen, the applicant shall provide a forty-eight-hour notice of the small cell antenna installation to the planning board office. Amen.
Can I have, just briefly, we really have to decide on a color. Do you come in three flavors? They come in like gray, they come in brown, they come in black. So, these aren't painted per se because the antenna can't be painted.
I think it should be gray.
It's gonna be a factor. I'm just gonna suggest from the ones that I've done and I've seen, they may make sense because the antenna is up in the top on cloudy days, it's invisible in the bold blue.
Gray.
That is gray.
Gray.
Thank you. Light gray, light gray is fine, that's okay.
Second is next. All in favor?
I'm...
It's like the Constitution.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a public carriage, a moving site plan administrator, and a stormwater permit of the Inley School. Do you put, um, put institutions else?
We have a... I have to read. You ready? I will accept the applicant's request to think...
No.
No.
That's the most ones.
A motion. Legal notice. In like, here we go. Anywhere. All right. In accordance with Situate Zone Bylaw section seven seven by plan administrative review and the planning board, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty p.m. the select board's hearing, Town Hall, six hundred Chief Trust Division Highway, separate outlet. Hearing is a major site plan administrative review and stormwater permit on an application submitted by the Inley School, such as now slash block slash lot fifty-two dash through dash five, of forty-three hundred square foot addition to the Inley Middle School with a net gain of twenty-four quadrant spaces for grading and utilities. The plan is available in the planning board's town hall, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Can we begin? You should tell, please.
Absolutely. My name is Gavin Port Rocker, Jr., resident of Cohasset. I served on the Inley Board of Trustees for about fifteen years and here on the Inley School.
I'm Paul Avery of Consulting Group. I am the sub-engineer for the project.
And then Tom is Peter in the architect for the project.
That was what's going on.
Sure. So, I'll just start with a very brief introduction and I'll pass it over to the smaller gentleman at the table. First of all, thank you for allowing us to come in. Thank you for letting us come in. We've come for you a number of times over the years. I've been here about twelve years ago. We built our main building three or four years ago, met with a number of you, but we modified another property for our toddler program. This is probably my last time coming in front of you because I'm paying off of the board. So, but I wanted to say thank you to you. I think we always really appreciate the town of Situate allowing the school to continue to prove itself. This is an exciting opportunity for us. We're looking to remove some temporary trailers at the box at the school about twenty-plus years ago. They were supposed to be there for a couple of years and then a new building built. But like all schools, that got set aside, so the trailers are well past their part expectancy at this point in time. We need to remove those. In an effort to do what I think is really right for the world we're in now, we're looking to recycle the main and building that's there, which is the main building of our middle school. We're going to look to improve and renovate that first floor of that building and make that extend from life of that building. I think that's a great thing for us to do with the resources that are there. And then we're looking to add, and let these gentlemen do the presentation, add space that's purpose-built as classrooms, specifically science classrooms and labs and meeting spaces for the students. The school is, just to kind of make sure you know, the school has been in a population, student population enrollment has been between two eighty and three hundred and just over three hundred students over the last several years. And we do not expect, and it's not the plan, that there's any increase to the student enrollment. One of the primary things that we've been addressing over the last ten, twelve years of these different building projects is constantly trying to improve the traffic flow, traffic pattern, and park rate. Now, Watch Hill residents, the neighbors to Inley School, made it very clear when we came in front of you all ten, twelve years ago and said they were not happy at the time. And so, we've consistently worked to remove traffic from both Route one twenty-three and Watch Hill Drive during drop-off times and everything else. And this project, I think, will continue that movement. We're actually adding a net of twenty-four parking spaces, keeping in mind that our students don't drive. This is up to a middle school, so this is primarily faculty and staff and families through even school. We feel this will help to, again, mitigate and reduce the inconvenience that occurs for those ten fifteen minutes during drop-off in the morning and checkup in the afternoon. We've all been by schools and we know what that's like, and so we're trying to do our part. So, we're excited about this. We are. We've done quite a bit of work and we appreciate you seeing us tonight. And I'm gonna pass it over to these gentlemen to go everything about this. So, I'll take it away to Tom and...
Please mark my voice. It's, but I'd like to share, Ken.
Tom doesn't usually sound like this. He came back from a trip. We think he sounds better than he did before.
Okay.
He hasn't talked as much.
Just briefly, I want to walk you through the school. Or Paul, who's the sub-engineer for the project, is here to really answer most of the technical questions you'll probably have about it. The two existing buildings on the campus are represented in yellow here. One is the Antico Commons. It's a single classroom building that's used occasionally. If you use it, can break out space. The other yellow building that you see here is existing middle school, very small, nineteenth-century building. Not really well-suited for the middle school. They've kind of grown into it. And the, as Dan Port noted, there's a large, kind of modular classroom building. Back behind it's quite ugly, leaking roof. It's falling apart far out of the disusefulness. That serves as primarily the entrance to the little school where the lockers are. And it's also one large classroom that serves as a science classroom, a kind of multipurpose space. We're removing that wing, the pack and building, stripping this back down to the original nineteenth-century structure, doing some renovations on the first floor. And then the proposed addition you see here is in blue, is situated on the front of the building, closer towards Main Street and one twenty-three. It's still well-packed on the setback, setback lines along the street. We want to preserve the existing lawn and this line of mostly oak trees along the street, which kind of creates nice frontage. Right now, there's a gravel parking lot somewhere in this vicinity that has about, parks pieces for about ten spaces with an access on and off route off from Main Street. We would like to take that out of use and put the new parking behind the building so it has a dedicated entrance, dedicated drop-off area for middle school, which doesn't exist presently, and then they can, you know, circuit back out to Watch Hill Drive. Presently on the site is about ten parking spaces. We're increasing that to thirty-four, including two handy app parking spaces. Paul will go through the details in more in a bit. This accomplishes increasing the parking quite dramatically, about twenty spaces or more over what's there now. And even though the enrollment and the staffing for this building will not change, the program, and I'll go through the here in a second, is really all about enhancing the existing program and the classroom spaces.
Is this the main drop-up of Main School?
No.
This is...
This is closer to Main Street. Um, the, this is a quick perspective of what the exterior is gonna look like. It's a fairly modern building, a lot of glass along Main Street. It's got a kind of an ivy-covered foundation wall down below. The classrooms, you know, face Main Street primarily. The building is clad in a wood-like material. And we have this circular elevator in the middle. There is actually closing a small amphitheater inside the space for kind of all school meetings. And this is our rear view of the elevation. I'm gonna go to the plan. This is, and the two buildings you see in gray on the left and right, this is Antico Commons and this is the existing middle school, which will be painted out kind of a neutral color in contrast to the new addition. So, this is the new entrance off the parking lot that you're looking at. This is the four plans. If you see the existing middle school building here, we're renovating the two bathrooms. And in the new addition, we're putting in a new entrance. Just beyond that is an amphitheater, which will seat the fifty-six students that attend the middle school for like an all-school meeting or in the morning or for a presentation. To the left-hand side of that is a class, large classroom. It's called Carlos. This essentially replaces the large multipurpose room that was in the Watch Hill trailer. And it has this dedicated storage space and workspaces nearby. We are adding one additional dedicated classroom space here to give some relief to the existing house. Beyond that, there are two additional small breakout rooms, so small groups can work with some cubicles for quiet private work. And then a Da Vinci Studio at the very end of the building, which is basically a satellite program for the Da Vinci Studios up in the main building so that these students don't have to go up the hill and walk, you know, two hundred feet to get to that program. We're bringing it down to the middle school. We also created an outdoor meeting space behind here, linking this building to Antico Commons. There's a garage store repeating materials in and out because the division lab they'll work this very hands-on, got a program, got a maker space that are working, building materials and things like that. So, having that access is important. And then we use this as an outdoor classroom space when the weather permits. And the second floor of the house, there's only a single-story addition. So, the second floor of the house is strictly staff space. It's offices, staff bathroom, and workspace and storage. And you have some scale allocations in here. The front facade is mostly, as you saw, the respective glass and the sides and front, the addition, or in a material that's synthetic, has a better maintenance than wood, but it will look like wood. And we're doing only minor work to the existing building to replace some windows and to... and to change its bank color, upgrading the bathrooms, as I noted earlier. Cross-section through the building shows that it's a, you have a kind of a low sloping roof towards Main Street, which is about 15 feet downhill of the site. This roof is designed to take photovoltaic panels, this point in the future. And he has to try to get as much light, this eastern light that comes in from this direction as possible. And that includes the, my presentation of the building. Let Paul take you from here from the site work.
So this is the existing site plan. It may be a little tough to read here, but just a few things of note on this. Tom talked about the buildings to be demolished. This is these modular buildings here that are coming out. Here's the existing building and then the addition will be out in here. The site access currently is, there's a drive that comes up from Hornet Stetson Road. And then we have this loop driveway that comes around. The spaces that are available here, it's about 10, as Tom said, it's the two that are formerly handicap spaces here. And then informally, whatever happens on gravel area in there. Couple other important things to notice is that there's a septic tank and pump right here. Be a little tough to read on this one. This is where the building is going to go, so those have to get moved. Right now, this building, the wastewater goes out into a septic tank. And then this pump chamber here is pumped up to a force main that continues up off the top of the page to an existing reach field. We're not changing capacity. We had Title V inspection recently. We ran full numbers and that there's still within the capacity of it. All that information has been submitted to the Board of Health. So that's where we're at with that. Site plan here may be a little redundant. This is, Tom talked about all this. This isn't showing all on the screen at all. I apologize for that. But, you know, here's the, the loop parking that goes, the driveway that goes around. We have a total of 34 spaces that are provided here, including the two handicaps. Yep, ADA access from the spaces. We have an accessible roof that goes up the sidewalk like this up to the entrance of the building. I mentioned the building, excuse me, but it's accessible to the existing building as well. And then also to get to the commons, you get two handicap spaces, we can come around this way. Any questions on the layout itself, next slide about grading and drainage? Oh, final thing here. The fire department did ask a question about like a sweat path for ladder trucks. So I'm just, we prepared this figure that this just shows the sweat path of a ladder truck going through the parking lot. They're navigating through there.
The existing building right now has no direct emergency vehicle access at all. Being set back, parked with street, parked in the parking.
Okay, so here's the grading and drainage plan for stormwater. As I'm sure you're all familiar with the site, it drains, water flows downhill. It's a fun fact that you'd be surprised how often people forget that. So it comes, it comes down the hill towards Hornet Stetson Road. There, the upper, the portions of the campus upgraded this, have their own stormwater system that connects into the system on Watch Hill Drive. So we're pretty much dealing with everything from a limited work down. Right now, there are no storm structures that capture any of that. It all just flows and works way down to Hornet Stetson Road. There is a catch basin here, right at the corner of Watch Hill and Hornet Stetson. There's a pipe that heads west from there and goes to a brook and then under the road to the, to the left on the opposite side. The way we're going to manage stormwater is, is we have a series of structures here, catch basins and pipes that are shown on the drawings. They will initially go into a series or chamber right in here, which is a series of underground pipes. And that's where we do the detention component of our stormwater management. The water, as it comes out of here, gets treated for, pre-treated for water quality, goes through a sediment port bay, and then the final end here is the infiltration basin, which provides a little bit more detention and also meets our water quality and groundwater recharge criteria by recharging the groundwater. One of the comments that came up on this, if you see these four target areas here, there's one, two, three and four. Those are where we dug the test pits to support the stormwater design. When we did this in schematic design, we had worked up a plan that dealt with infiltration with some pipes underground. That, as we looked at the soil and found out what we were dealing with, would have resulted in a big mound in the front yard. And so we felt it was important to preserve the aesthetics of the building from the street, so we moved it. The downside on that is, is we didn't dig the test pit where the basin actually ended up being. So one of the comments, it's come from peer reviewers, request that we do another test pit here. The results were very consistent throughout the four different pits we dug on the site. I think that the data that we designed this around represented reliable. Nevertheless, we will go ahead and do a final pick here in what's kind of where this basin ends up being. We're trying to schedule that for next week. And so hopefully we will be able to do that. Obviously, the ground is bulletproof, so getting a, you know, an excavator that can effectively deal with that is going to be criteria. We have to be a big machine and we won't use the first time. So that's where we are at with that. Yeah, I think that's about it on grading and drainage. Are there any questions on this topic? And we'll jump to site utilities, which is even simpler.
Is that catch basin? Is that, is that your, there's that town?
The one down the corner?
Yeah, yeah.
That's. Yeah, yeah. Yes, yes. It's right here. It's in the corner of the street. All set?
All right.
Okay, that was a merge. Zoom out. Now I have to go paging down. Like Tom. And you're going to figure out what's working.
That was what she put up again.
Well, so this is sheet three point, C300, I think it is. The next one would be sheets. Yeah, she could have been addressed. C400. Which is the site utilities plan. Could you look at that? Yeah? Yeah. Perfect. Picture. I know it's not. We're back. Sorry about that. So the utilities that service the existing building here, most of them come from Hornet Stetson Road. We're going to just cap and abandon those. And the water as shown here is going to come from Watch Hill Drive. Doing that will basically avoid all the traffic disruptions of having to do work in that street. Same thing with the gas. The gas is actually, looks like it's off the shoulder of the road. We'll bring the gas service in that way. And then the sewerage, which we talked about before, is, you know, this is where we're going to relocate the septic tank. And this is where we're going to relocate the pump chamber. And then the new force main goes up around the site to, this is how you do it, right? About up to a limited work, up at the top here. And then we tie into the existing system, which is, which is beyond the project here. I can go into some of the details on the stormwater basin if you would like to see that. Otherwise, I don't need to get into that. And there are a bunch of details here.
Just a couple of questions. Just a couple of questions. One is, is the total volume of flow going to the catch basin from stormwater? Is that the same or less than what's going there now?
The peak rate is less, which is what the performance standard is. What the volume is, I'm not sure. So that we, you know, the standard is, is you can't increase the peak runoff rate and we meet that standard.
But in situ, you can.
It's a volume too. It's a volume rate too.
All right. So I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay, so we'd like to answer that question.
But right now, there is no detention on that site at all.
Right. So he's asking, is the volume runoff and is that a result of it? And I don't, I don't know the answer. Oh, no, that's, they're two different things. There's peak rate and.
It's the pain flow versus.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, so I don't have the answer to that. You know, we, we.
It's just our standard.
No, I, okay, that's fair. We have looked at the comments from the peer reviewer. There were some comments about the design of the basin. You know, we're showing two feet of separation from Nancy's line of groundwater. The comment has come back that we wanted three. There were comments about the, you know, putting level spreader into the berm outlet and that type of thing. And so we've looked at all that and. It's been a lot, yeah, yeah.
In terms of wastewater flow, it's getting pumped, looks like up the hill to an existing subject field, drain field?
Yeah.
Is there any increase there?
No.
So same volume?
Same volume. So what we did was we went through and two things. One, we're not proposing to increase enrollment, but beyond that, we looked at what the enrollment is. We pulled the design plans out and saw what it's designed for and we're still.
I just want to.
Yeah, we're within it. No increments.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Jennifer Dono, our consulting engineer, is online, so maybe. Well, I think we should hear from her before I. My question.
Thank you.
Janet, are you here?
I am.
Hi, how are you?
I can't turn my video on, but I, I can't. Volume on, my audio on. Hi, I'm so not used to being able to see you guys, but, or you can't see me. So anyway, I'm Janet Bernardo, professional engineer with the Horsley Witten Group. And we did conduct a review of this project and provided the board with a letter dated January 16th, 2025. There's a number of comments under the zoning portion of our review. And the applicant has asked for a few waivers that the board may want to consider before having them make any additional changes. The stormwater portion of the letter, we did have a few comments. Some of them can, I believe, be easily addressed. And the applicant is basically saying that they will address them. I think it would be, it's important to see that the proposed infiltration basin actually can meet the requirements. It's great that they're doing a test pit next week. So I think that they will then be able to show any changes to that system to hold the three feet of separation. I think the biggest thing with the test pit in the footprint of the basin is the seasonal high groundwater elevation. And so that they can prove that they are three feet above that. Right now, they are basically at the same, their bottom of their basin is basically the same elevation as the two test pits closest to it show groundwater. They kind of made the assumption that the grade, the system is two feet lower than those two test pits would be, so therefore groundwater will also be lower. Just how much lower, we're not really sure. So they'll have to do a little bit of adjusting on that basin to hold the three feet. One of our other suggestions was to have some type of a level spreader. They are showing a 40-foot-long berm weir. You know, so like basically the edge of the basin closest to the main road, they, is 40 feet long and water would just kind of flow over that. We're recommending that they make that something solid, a curb, granite curb, a concrete wall, something so that it can be set perfectly level. 40 feet is kind of long to make it perfectly level. It's hard to do that. And so when they're redesigning their system, you know, they might want to make it 40 feet long. And a contractor is going to need to hold it to that. And so having that as-built to show what that's actually, is it level for 40 feet will be, that's, that's kind of like the primary part of their design. And it is overtopping for the 25 and the 100-year storm. We would prefer that it didn't overtop, at least for the 25-year storm, because they're almost holding that back. So it'd be better, I think, if they held up back the whole 25-year and didn't let it overtop. And the, and the other piece is the basin currently has a slope tying back to the existing grades on the outside of the basin. That's a three to one, which is a very common practice. However, your regulations require that they don't have anything that's greater than 25%, which would be one in four compared to one in three. So that might be something that you want to either say it's okay that they have one in three or let them know that they really need to hold the one to four, less than 25%. And so that, I think that they can make it work. I would like to see all the calculations to show that it really does.
Thank you.
All right. So we have a number of issues that have been identified that need some input from the board tonight. Okay. One of the things is that the zoning bylaw requires a landscape plan for every submit. They're proposing five new trees with the information on the plans. Do you want to give them a waiver from submitting a landscape plan? Does the landscape plan include the driveway? Right now, they're showing five trees in the park, in the median, in between the parking area. They're not showing any other landscaping.
Is the landscaping in the front staying or is that all gone away?
It's landscaping by the road that is staying. I mean, the existing trees are down there to remain. There's no proposed trees down there. And I had suggested, after resulting from a meeting with the Police Department and Building Commissioner, that they may want to put some boulders out down by the street as a security measure, because I actually think there's boulders out there now.
There's some stone wall. That's a.
There's stone wall, but I think there's some boulders too.
Well, I know we do park, so when there's events in the police detail, they do park cars along there. So I can't picture the boulders being there.
Well, it's just, it's something to look into to help as a security measure.
Absolutely.
For, for the school. I mean, so something, so if, if boulders are proposed, they need to be either shown on the plan or, or if you, if there's really no other landscape is proposed, I mean, this is the Water Resource Protection District. I would think we would want, I think we want to see a landscape plan. Agree?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing that the board needs to make determination on is right now, and I sent, I sent you a memo today. It came in today, which was after the deadline, but they do need input on this information. They're, they need, they're proposing 34 parking spaces. They need 37 per zoning. Are you willing to give them a waiver for three parking spots? I think that the way the parking is laid out now is, it's good. I mean, it provides a lot of stacking room. And so whenever they have special events, they park anywhere they want anyways. But I think that, to me, that seems like a reasonable waiver to give them for the three parking spaces.
It's a school. The kids are not driving.
No, exactly, exactly. Yeah, and it's, the parking requirement is based on square footage, which is a little bit unusual. You know, as opposed to the number of people that are there and so, we're looking at 50 students and five faculty.
Well, I always know he's driving, but he wouldn't. So is that, yes, okay, good. Yeah, I'll say it's okay. They have lighting, it is proposed around the parking lot. They didn't provide a photometric plan. Does the board want a photometric plan?
What is the plan with the lighting? So it will be lit all the time during all dark hours?
So we currently. So we currently, so it's a great question. I don't know the answer, but I believe that lights go off late at night. We already, on the upper part of the campus, we, we have there are low lights, we don't have big highlights, because the neighbors asked us not to have those big highlights. So it's lit, but it's not, it doesn't look.
Are these higher lights?
No, these are all.
These are all low lights.
Yeah, there's, there's the actual catalog, representative catalog cut in the drawings. And that those were chosen, they match the existing pictures that are already out there, and they're all dark.
Which one?
One detail sheet, C5. C503, low lighting.
So this one detailing?
Yeah, low rating current one. Yeah.
So what's the top of the light height? Then like 10 feet or something?
Yeah.
And it looks like it's covered enough that it's really down light?
Yes, dark type.
And it's dark stacking light. And that's consistently fixed usually up there.
That, I mean, that, that looks good. I think that's good.
So do you want a photometric plan?
That's, I, I guess that's probably up to the designers to make sure they have adequate light for people to walk there.
Well, you need, you need to know that it doesn't go off-site. That's what, you need to know that the lighting does not go off-type onto a body of properties.
And you're already well aware of that anyways, because it's a sure.
But where's the abiding property?
It's Route 123 on one side, it's Watch Hill Drive, the actual street. And then on the other side is the nursery.
But are the lights on the street side of the building?
No, no, on the side. On the parking lot side. But we own, so that this particular property is seven blocks that could make up the entire property. And there is one neighbor across that parking lot area, the Roman family was there. It's the only house that we have on that section.
Which you will at some point.
They're wonderful people, so, so the, yeah, they're, they're, that would be the only property on that side.
It feels to me like it's so interior and blocked out by other structures while I go through that.
I kind of feel, I kind, I feel the same way. All right, so. All right, so as Janet was pointing out, they're going to do another test pit so that we can see the conditions in the infiltration basin. There's a discrepancy in the soil data that they used. Janet, can, you're going to have a conversation with the engineer in the next few days on that?
Yeah, I would be happy to have a conversation with them. I, I know we talked about it quickly. And one thing to note is that the applicant is meeting their water quality, the one-inch runoff in the same basin that they're meeting their recharge calculation on. So, so they did the recharge calculation using C soil, which the soil survey suggests using A and B. If they use A and B, the volume would be less than using the one-inch water quality volume. So I, I think that they should show the A and B, because that is what the soil survey is reading. But they will be able to meet it, because they're, they're meeting it for the one inch. So it's, it's a lesser volume that's required. That's kind of confusing, but it's a calculation.
So your recommendation is to, to go with the A or B soils based on what is shown on the NRCS maps? And we'll use that for both volume and infiltration rates?
No, no, the infiltration rate you use by the soil for the test pit that you excavated, that's what's infiltrating to the soil. The soil survey map that comes off of, from, from natural resource conservation services is the surface material and how well the surfaces allow the soil, allow water to infiltrate into the immediate surface. So you're showing A soil with lawn compared to what's into the ground that's hard to compare. It, it's, it's not an issue, because you're going to meet it, so. So why bother arguing about it?
Yeah, no, no, I, I agree. So let me look back at this further questions, if, if we could just have an offline discussion to make sure on the same page.
That's totally fine.
Okay.
All right, so I just, it's a comment that I have. I mean, I see that the O N M is going to be revised and street sweeping practices were revised as appropriate to coincide with TSS credits needed. If you're not going to do the street sweeping and per what the book says, then don't take credit for it. All right, so we have another comment. The wat, the properties in the Water Resource Protection District, okay? So the plans provide, we, in the zoning bylaw, the limited impervious coverage is 15% for 250 square feet.
2500.
2,500 square feet unless a system of artificial recharge is installed that will not degrade groundwater quality. Well, they're putting an artificial recharge system in. On every other project, we make an engineer certify that the groundwater is not being degraded. We would like a certification that the groundwater is not being degraded. There is, as Janet has pointed out, in the Water Resource Protection District, zoning bylaws says most deeper than 4 to 1, 25% slopes. You've got slopes shown on this project that are three to one. Does the board want to meet the zoning bylaw in the Water Resource Protection District with the 4 to 1 slopes?
I would be, why would we want change from 4 to 1 to 3 to 1?
Well, it just, it extends the impact of the project. So we're to, to create the, the berm basin, we need to raise it up as a berm. And if it's flatter, it's just going to extend up further and be more work. You know, functionally, so I mean, it's not, it's grading. It's grading, but it's not really part of the landscape, it's part of the structure, so.
Yeah, I would say, you know, if it's just more work, I mean, that's. I mean, we, we've got a standard for a reason. If there was, if there were limitations on physical space or something that said we needed to, you know, make some adjustments there, I would say that, that might be a reason to do it. But I, I wouldn't want to just.
Okay, so.
You know, agree with it just because a little bit more work.
All right, so we're going to make changes, change the structure anyway. We may run out of space at 4 to 1, just because it's going to have to come up to do, achieve a number of the things that we've talked about here. So let me see what we can do, because we're going to go back to the drawing board with it anyway. And if, if 4 to 1 becomes problematic, then perhaps.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want to give sort of a blanket.
Can I make a suggestion then?
Sure.
That as you've done on another project, that it has to be 4 to 1 on the outside. But if they have to go to 3 to 1, only on the inside of the basin. That, that's what you did with the water treatment plant. You kept them on 4 to 1 on the outside. And if they have to go, if they need to, you know, try to, they can go 3 to 1 on the inside. If they need to do it, I would prefer 4 to 1 everywhere.
Right, and I think that should be the design objective, right, 4 to 1.
Okay.
But if, if you have, I, I would say if you have to come back because you can't physically keep it on the property or something.
Okay.
Then I would say we would entertain that as, okay, we could change the slope.
That's all the comments.
That would be my suggestion.
That, that filled another, a number of comments that they have to address from fire, water, you know, et cetera, that have to be incorporated into the plan set. And I guess we'll ask again, are there, is there going to be any type of bollards at the front entrance as a security measure?
There shouldn't be.
So just in a hurry, I'm sorry, I'll just ask a question. So this 40-foot, is that, that's going to become a wall, is that right?
I.
Because that is going to create a barrier.
Well, I, we'll, we'll, let's see what we end up. Okay, so there's a.
So all I was going to try to say to you is that although we really can't control what happens here under your work the health and safety of children is always worked in our mind. And anything that will stop cars or anything else from crashing into that building should be.
Well, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. So on the street side of the building, along Main Street, the building, it's a single-story addition, it's this foundation wall, it's right on seven feet of up grade.
Well, you know, I found that.
So if a car ever go up within the lawn and hit the building, it's not going to injure anyone inside the building. On the parking lot side, where there's a drop-off, that, that is accessible, it's right at grade.
That's what, that's what we would like.
Right, we, we, you know, we would certainly consider that. I mean, it's, it's not a code of progress that we know of. But if we can put them there without obstructing pedestrian flow and vehicle flow, I just, why not?
I mean, we know that we don't want to upset children, but our race is already going to upset them even more.
Yeah.
So.
That's pretty much all I had.
Just a question for you, the street side, it looks like it's all glass.
Almost all glass.
Is, are there engine treatments or something? Are you trying to obstruct direct view into the?
Well, so the building side, the first course, it's about 15 feet above the street elevation. So building's sitting up quite afar, and the glass starts about two feet off the floor. So, you know, from the street, you're really not going to see much of what's happening. You know, those are right up against the glass.
I would say we really appreciate the safety piece, right? So as a board, our board, that's been turned up, and it actually was an ongoing conversation about the design from the start. How are we protecting at the same time that we're building a beautiful structure that's going to take advantage of natural light? It's been an ongoing conversation that we care deeply about, so I appreciate those comments.
Unfortunately, that's the word.
And glass typically, I mean, any glass structure you've got by, there's reflection during the day. It's really in the evening, if you work in the evening, when it's lit from the inside, you would see. But we don't do a lot of things that I can sell.
Okay, true, literally, it's supposed to be a bit. Anything else that you do?
Yeah, it's, um, Erin, is there something to say first?
Yeah, Bruce Starbys, going through Janet Pastor Lane, here at the Water Resources Commission. So I appreciate that you have community design, water recharge system. But one of the requirements for the Water Resource Protection District is that, that all runoff from impervious surfaces should be recharged to the site. And so I wasn't, couldn't follow exactly what happens to the water running off parking lot.
I think it's considered that it doesn't get infiltrated and going to the catch base, right, gone to the drainage system.
All, all the water from the parking lot goes into the infiltration basin.
Right.
So within the, within the limited work.
So at what point does it, does the infiltration basin overflow into the catch base? I mean, is it, is it a one-year storm, is it a 10-year storm, is it like?
It, I think it starts to overflow to a certain degree. So there's an outward function of the catch base that starts to, probably a one or two-year storm is when it starts. If I can look at that there, I mean, I looked at the, the design work, it is how the basin is working. But yeah, I mean, that, so what there is, is there's a, there's a catch basin structure in there that's the outlet set. And then there's a, storage continues up above that, so.
I guess all in one reason to know what the existing condition volumetric flow is and that you're better believing that with the new system. Because that would then suggest we're, we're not increasing the flow of water off of the site, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I would encourage the board to be reasonably conservative in this case, because we do have two active wells across the road.
Yeah.
Thank you.
They do have to meet the stormwater bylaw, which is rain and volume per situa.
This is Janet, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Sorry, I'm going to be able to raise my hand. I'm not so good at this. I think four years down the road, we'd have this all figured out. You said that the Water Resource Protection District requires all runoff from impervious surfaces be captured, be recharged? Is that what I just heard? All, all impervious or all road dry, like parking lot runoff? Or like including the basketball court and the roof itself? Is that impervious surface that is required to be recharged?
So the answer to that question would be yes, that's the way it literally reads.
The basketball court is beyond the limit of the project.
Then that would, that would need to be included. And any new stuff needs to be included. And all runoff from impervious surface shall be recharged on site. That's, that's right in the Water Resource Protection District zoning requirements.
So is that within the limited work of the project of the entire property?
I think that we have to say on this, it's within the limited work of your project. What has happened before, we can't concern ourselves with that right now. It's this project, you have to worry about this project.
So this is the net additional impervious surface over the existing area that exists today in the worksite is what we're talking about. In other words, if there's a building there, we put another building there with the same roof area. And that hasn't really changed anything, right?
That's right, so we have an existing building that we're not changing, and it's within the limited work.
Right.
Okay, we have a basketball court that is not within the limit of work that we're not changing, it's beyond the project.
Right. So it's the additional impervious surface.
Impervious area within the project, limited work, pavements and rooftops.
Sorry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just here to support the project. My name is David Vance from the Vulcan, Vancouver, Illinois. City resident, been here 16 years. Both my kids were born here, they both have gone in since they were toddlers. And I just hope the board can, you know, support the kids and support the project. We've been here through the middle school, the turf fields, the public library, all things have benefited mostly the kids in town. And I just want to keep that in mind as we're trying to go through this project. It's also a project funded, so every time you say, you know, you know, something might cost a little bit more, it's costing us a little bit more, so.
Absolutely.
But I, you know, I know you guys do a great job, appreciate your time. Thank you.
We are still campaigning, so we'd like to donate, set that up for you, it's late.
So obviously, there needs to be another plan submitted, et cetera. And so, you know, we don't have, we don't have a decision tonight, we need more information. Recommending we continue the public hearing to 6:30 on March 13.
Can I respectfully ask that we try to do this sooner than that?
We can't, we can't.
We, we, we just can't, we are just so full, unfortunately.
Even if we get all the information you need in the next few days, in response to this.
I have public hearings scheduled for February 13th and February 27th already. I've got a new middle school, a new elementary school on the 13th plus zoning. And I have two other, one new and one continued public hearing on February 27th.
Okay, we're just, well, I'm feeling urgency to move forward, because we're trying to complete this project, but I'm into the calendar here.
I understand that, but you know, we were also told this was going to be submitted last fall, and it wasn't submitted until recently.
Yes, so.
So.
We're, we're, we're trying to do, I'm putting this in as soon as I can.
Again, we, we understand your frustration, we are frustrated as well, but we have a lot of work with a huge job being coming up and these other.
So it's, it's March 13?
Yes.
Yeah, six thirty, you'll be first on the agenda, you'll be first on the agenda that night.
Okay, okay.
And we will take however long we need on that night. Hopefully, hopefully, we can get all the issues resolved before then. So there'll be a draft decision on the 13th. That, that's the, that's the intention.
That's our goal.
Could we, could I ask if this is appropriate, Paul, so if something changes and somebody else is delayed, we would love to try to move forward early. I think you can tell that, so, but thank you.
That never happens.
I don't, I'm an optimist, so thank you.
Okay, but you see that we have to continue to a time and date, sir.
That's the law.
That's the law, and so that's what we're doing, we're continuing to a time and date. That's the law, and so that's what we're doing, we're continuing to a time and date, sir. I mean, if, if, if it happens that something moves out, which I don't think it will, we would have to reevaluate.
Okay.
But, Audrey, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for major site plan administrative review and stormwater permit for, for an addition to the Inley Men's School until March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty P M. And to continue the time for action, we're filing with the town for until March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-nine.
Second, second, all in favor?
I agree.
It's March twenty-eighth, usually you go early.
Uh, I'm, but this decision is gonna get filed right away.
Right, right away, just, just checking.
Okay, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you very much, thank you, I love you, appreciate it, I know we're. Thanks, though.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Uh, look, I said that, I suppose, you're gonna shift, okay, yeah.
Okay, so, and with, you know, we have a public hearing, site plan administrator review, V C M, N S M, F B, O B. I'd like to know, say, no three kind of.
Okay. We won't move it, I'm sweating.
Quite, quite impressive, that, or doing it in the.
Yeah, so.
Now that's the treatment. Yeah.
All right, we're all, we're all set, you can grab a free.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah.
You too. No, I did, I put it on a little.
Okay.
I, I was gonna do it on the laptop, you can copy all.
Let me go, nevermind, nevermind. No. I, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue, no, wait a minute.
Well, I, I just want your.
I am just. Give me a second. In accordance with Master and Law's forty-eight, section nine and eleven, and City Bill and Bylaw, section five thirty, definitely. That's not even, the countryway.
I'm leaving the whole pit because here's only know what to do.
Don't forget to get rid of what we're giving you.
In accordance, we'll try it again.
All right, let's go.
Let's go. In accordance with Master and Law's chapter forty-eight, section nine and eleven, Citywood zoning bylaw, section five eighty, Village Center and Neighborhood District, section seven fifty design review, section seven sixty parking requirements, section seven seventy site plan review, and nine forty referrals. The planning board will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, at eight P M. I'm just a little late, but, um, in the select boards hearing room, Citytown Hall. The subject of the hearing is an application submitted for major site plan review in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, North Citywood Village District, North Citywood Village, Outer Village District, V C M, N S V, O B, regarding the construction of a one-family building, a multi-family building with five units, ten bedrooms, and ten parking spaces. The site utilities and site amenities at the project location of eight oh three countryway. The applicant is John McGill, and the property is owned by A N B A G I L L L L C. Property is shown on the session map, its parcels twelve dash two dash three, plans are available, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Did you say like all lots of messages you could just?
I know.
How are you tonight?
I'm good, how are you?
Oh, very good. Yeah, look, let's go.
Um, I'm John McGill, um, and, uh, since submitting this site plan review, things have changed a little bit. Um, we had submitted a site plan review for eight oh three countryway, um, after we purchased, and we learned that seven ninety, the owners of seven ninety-nine were potentially planning a large forty B. Um, so we approached the owner, came to agreement to take over that property. So, um, we're now, uh, which we have a purchase and sale for the property next door. Um, so now, uh, we're looking to, uh, just do as of right, five units on eight thirty-three, and as of right's eleven, we're looking to do ten units on seven ninety-nine, instead of the, a large forty B that was actually going in there. Um, so what I, the reason I wanted to still come here tonight, even though we're gonna redesign, um, the site for the two properties. They're two separate projects, two separate owners, we're gonna be working together with the, um, the owners of the, um, seven ninety-nine to, um, share some utilities, to give an easement for a driveway, so we can give more space to the building, space them out better. Um, so we're gonna redesign the, the site plan to incorporate the property next door as well. Um, so tonight, I wanted to come, because I'm looking for a referral to design reviews. The buildings will be very similar, because now we want them all to match and, and fit on the property well. This will allow us to not only, you know, do one septic system in the back of the property, instead of multiple, um, we'll be able to provide more open space, instead of jamming buildings, you know, inside their propping lines. And obviously, now we'll be able to, there'll be significantly less units in there than was planned by, by the own current owner of seven ninety-nine. Obviously, we felt that that would affect the sale of our property. So they're gonna end up being two, uh, five units on, um, five units on eight oh three, and two of the same, those same buildings with ten units on seven ninety-nine. And again, looking just for a referral tonight to design review, and I'll come back at the next available meeting, which I think was fifteen thirty, twenty, something in March.
No, you're, you're gonna be at the end of March, March twenty-seventh.
I'm very, very good, Mr. McGill.
Um, five on eight oh three and ten on seven ninety-nine. Uh, yeah, so this is just a, a layout using this, um, uh, using the footprint of the building that we had designed for eight oh three. Um, yeah, so that's the building's design for eight oh three, what we'll now do is, is a couple of those, just three of them, instead of just the one and whatever was planned for. So it's gonna allow us, and, you know, it's gonna, like I said, it's gonna allow us more open space, um, it's gonna be, fit better into the.
And it's not overheat.
No, and we're actually doing less than the, I think, um, for seven ninety-nine, the, um, as of right is eleven, we're only looking to do ten, so less units than, than required. So I think it'll, it'll be much better for the area, and, um, you know, it is, it'll fit well in with the, you know, the, the project going to the right of eight oh three, um, so I just think it'll be a nice, it'll just work better.
Well, and you need to study the work of state.
Yeah, yeah.
So a question for you, um, to get a referral to design review, what gets submitted to design review will be the design for the three units.
Oh, just right now, just, just eight oh three.
Just eight oh three, just that building.
Just the one building, go back.
The only thing changing on eight oh three would be the driveway would shift over. The, we're only submitting for the, the design review in front of you, including that site plan. The only difference is the septic system will be shared with the other buildings, and the driveway will be spaced over, because seven ninety-nine will allow us to get.
That will all be on the eight oh three, that code of design review. Not with that new driveway and all that, that'll be.
Well, no, we weren't gonna.
But what I, what I don't wanna do is do a sort of theoretical review of it, and then, once you redesign the whole thing, have to kind of go back and say this design review.
Yeah, but design review goes, takes care of the building.
I know, but the building's on the site, and the building is adjacent to the other buildings.
Right, but the building location isn't really, isn't gonna change.
Yeah, so the only thing changing is far.
On eight oh three.
Yeah, the only thing changing on eight oh three is instead of having, um, two spot, or a spot in the garage, we're able to move, seven ninety-nine will give an, um, easement to allow the driveways, the, the roadway to move over. So now we'll be able to park in their driveways, instead of having to park them in the back. So it's just a driveway, it's just giving more green space in front of the units, so that's, that's it.
Right, so the, the design review committee will see that way.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we'll have that, yeah, 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 we'll have that, we'll have that for them, and that's the only thing changing. The other stuff that doesn't matter, design review, was instead of the septic being all jammed in the back, it'll be, you know, along the back of the property. Um, so they won't, and that obviously doesn't matter to them, um, but the building itself, um, will remain the same. And that's the same building that'll go on the other, the other two spots farther than on seven ninety-nine, that's the plan right now. So at least if I go back, when I go back to design review in March, April, whatever, and back there, they would have already seen the building, so, you know, it's just, to expedite the whole party process, to do it as, uh, since they are kind of working together, um, it just makes sense. Um, but I hope to resubmit, um, sooner rather than later, in the next couple of weeks, to Planning Board, the updated site plan. Obviously, each has to redo now the calculations, go to, go to, um, Chester and have him look at it.
Right, so they'll be shared, shared right in, shared septic, and it all, it's gonna have to be cross easemented, et cetera.
I don't know, but designer reviews not gonna look at that.
So Daniel's not gonna get that.
But they're gonna look at the footprint and how they park around it, and we'll have.
Right, and they're, I mean, it was discussed at the hearing here the other day, and, you know, he's gonna have to run the driveway all across the back, too, so that, you know, there's a connection in the back for, for fire, um.
Yep.
Et cetera, and drainage caps will need to be redone, et cetera.
Yeah.
Um.
No, correct, with the driveway, we restarted the layout, so you'd be able to come in, we're able to move the driver. Currently, the driver for the existing property is right up against the stone wall, for the, that's now moving to the other side of that property. Should be able to, so it's giving a larger buffer area to be able to see, pointing out, so be able to pull in, go around, across the back, and back out the other side to where the existing driveway is on seven ninety-nine now, so.
So you did get a pair review, but I asked John not to come tonight, because it all has to be redone, so that's why our engineer is not here. You did get a comment today, which I sent, uh, sent you all, and, um, I sent it to Don McGill, and Mr. Hale is here. If he wants to indicate what his comment was, because I'm sure all the board members did not get a chance to read.
I have a good. Give me a second.
Right now?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay, um, so I, uh, I've been building in North Citywood and Mordecai Lincoln for thirty-seven years, and I have owned multiple properties on Countryway, and I'm currently on a butter across from this, uh, these two properties that are going on. Uh, the, this, uh, project that's going on, and, um, you know, doing something better than, than what was there, I'm all for it. Okay, I've got a couple of issues that I hope are addressed conscientiously and reasonably, and that is the seven ninety-nine property flooded in the basement, its basement, constantly, and it ran a sump pump into the storm drain on that side of the street that goes under Countryway, and if that storm drain is plugged going toward Bound Brook Project, that comes into my basement at eight-ten Countryway, and the stuff that comes in there, because it's rusty pipe, um, and its roots growing through, they need to replace a whole section of the storm drain going up in that direction, toward the North Citywood Center. What comes through is this rusty slime, and it kills the sump pump within six months. So what I ended up having to do there was to build up my basement floor with six inches of concrete, leaving a ditch around the outside, and putting a gravity drain that goes out the back of that building, and whenever that plugs up, that slime is still in that ditch. It's not at the top of my six inches of concrete, so I can have a washer dryer down there, so I have a couple of tenants there. Um, that, this issue of drainage is addressed as part of this project. That's critical, because I've got tenants in there, and they're concerned about septic system there for multiple units, and the last thing they want is, is septic coming in. So they're very nervous about that, so I think it can be handled, as long as people know what's going on, you're welcome to come take a look at it. Okay, well, what I had to do, I mean, it's hard for me to walk around in that basement, but I've got short tenants, so, um, so that's one thing. And the other thing is that, um, I own eight oh nine Countryway, eight sixteen Countryway, eight fourteen Countryway. I donated to my charity foundation, um, at the end of this past year, and eight-ten I still own as a, as a landlord, with two actually employees of my company that are renting there. Um, get people walking from the new project further down across from eight sixteen, and walking toward the train, and from this project, that sidewalk needs to be on that side of the street as part of this project. I've heard that, uh, there were, there was gonna be eminent domain, and they were gonna put it on the other side of the street. First of all, eight fourteen, it's all ledge, so this would all have to be picked out, and then you'd have people crossing that street after the bend from Ohasse, where people come flying around that corner, and we've seen accidents, there's a person died in front of eight sixteen, and in front of my office building at eight oh nine, when it used to be, someone took out the marker, the stone marker that was there. Um, so keeping the sidewalk just on that side, and it continues on that side to go down to the train, would be a much more sensible thing than having people zigzagging across that road.
That would be my recommendation, I would say.
I've never heard anything about putting sidewalk up on the other side of the road.
No, I, that would.
We already have it designed, we're already designing the sidewalk in front of our, in front of.
That would be great, that would be great, so.
Can I get some of that sidewalk, find one, I don't need the last project back, please.
That's the log line challenge.
Oh, nice.
So I actually built one, a sidewalk in front of eight oh nine Countryway, in front of that wall, just because it's concerned about people being able to walk there.
Oh, where can I, if I can address, so we're, we're, like I said, we're already, the sidewalk thing, we're already gonna do, uh, in front of the property, um, for both eight oh three and, and seven ninety-nine, and then obviously, as far as the, you know, the first thing we'll do is pull the pump out of there. I mean, that's, once we, once we own the property, um, once we close up the property, so, and we'll, we'll, we'll end up doing, obviously, full stormwater. So obviously, there's nothing over there now, with the, with our stormwater plan, we have to contain the water from the site.
Yeah, I think, I think you'd have to be dealing with, but you might as well be aware of what's coming, and you want them to come over and take a peek at that. Because it's, it's pretty nasty, and if that can go away, that would be great.
No, we'll, we'll make sure it's not going to the other side of the road, so.
Alright, sounds good, sounds good, well, it's gonna be nice to see something else there, and I appreciate you guys helping, thank you for, uh, letting me get my two cents in. The, the issue as far as what to do with Mordecai Lincoln, I mean, there's, there's multiple possibilities, and people have different ideas.
That's not our curbs, you know, but we know all about issues.
If, if, if you ever wanted to block the bridge, make it a one-way, and build a covered bridge, a wooden-covered bridge, like the one in Lucerne with historical panels on it, a walking bridge, talk to me.
We will.
I'd, I'd be, I'd be happy to help you fund it.
I have forwarded that email to the town administrator, so he is aware.
I think it would be very cool, and very cool as part of the Mordecai Lincoln project, and just make it a, a nice place to actually go down there and visit. I think that's what you gotta mind for, anyway.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much, and I look forward.
Yes, with you at a later time.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, well. All right.
Mr. McGill's want a copy of the design review?
Yes.
There, what, what I got.
I would recommend it, I mean, I already, with the first, what's first, we, I already have a meeting scheduled where, um, three forty, Ben, it has to come back. So this will be, it'll be very timely.
What's that date?
February eleventh.
Okay, I guess we'll send you February eleventh.
Well, this is.
Uh, design review, nothing.
February eleventh.
Yes, I'll come back for February eleventh.
I would, I would, design review as well.
Oh, okay.
That's a public hearing, I, I mean, has anybody have a public setup? Should ask for public comment?
I don't have any comment, I'm, I'm the owner of eight oh six, so I can't be here to.
Ask online?
Ask the guest. All right. Is anybody on the line?
No.
Who wants to comment?
Who would like to comment?
Uh, Ms. Lambert, you have no virtual hands raised.
There you go. Thank you.
I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for major site plan administrative review for multi-family building in Village Center and Neighborhood District, North Citywood Village District, Outer Village Sub-District, V C M, N S V, O B, until March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty P M, and to continue the time for action, we're filing with the town for, until May thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Second, second, all in favor?
Alright.
Uh, right.
Thank you, Mr. McGill, last to speak.
Right, I did.
Thanks.
To use, I have a mind, out, out, out.
What am I saying?
It's the extension, because I'll fill in all information, and it'll be a catch too, as a continuation, and he'll have that. Something questionable.
I'm gonna do one signing point out.
Thank you. Jack.
I'm just playing my own terms.
Yes, I'm gonna move right over to forty five minutes, right?
Okay, all right, I saw, we, we have one.
About two minutes, please. February eleventh.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Goodnight, guys.
We have a two minutes, please.
No. He said some minutes. I will fix the planning board meeting minutes of December twelfth, twenty twenty four, and January ninth, um, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Right, yeah, and then we have one purchase order. Uh, I move to approve purchase order twenty five oh six, seven thirty one. Publication of legal notices in the postal matter for two hundred and eighty dollars.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
I would learn to, uh, ever part with M B T A, okay. No update. No update. And then we can go to our liaison reports, we're back to the Southside.
No, no.
Yeah, you go anywhere.
I did, I went to two C B C, and it's in New Southie. You know, I have more papers than I know what to do with the.
That's the I know, it's, it's terrible.
It's awful, but at any rate, um, the big thing that's going on at this point in time is Bates House, and they're gonna do, they have to do something with that, because it's basically, for all intents and purposes, fallen down. And the basketball courts are moving along, we can have pickleball with them, the ones owned by the high school. And so they're rescinding money and moving rapidly along.
What is going on with this historic commission thing?
That is a very good question.
Okay, nobody?
They're having some type of meeting at some point in time.
That, for, uh, for the historic commission for what?
Um, to review, um.
They're, when they're working on historic preservation, huh?
Yeah, well.
Maybe I'll go up to the.
Yes, it is.
I'm meeting with them, I'm meeting with them next week. Okay.
Right, but they're also having, what else? That they were having a public import.
Not that they're having a building, I think, or something.
I think they are.
I think they are, yeah. January twenty nine.
Good.
A meeting with them in the afternoon. Okay.
Okay.
Second oldest town in Massachusetts, and we have literally the worst reputation in the state.
We do it.
Yeah, we do a whole lot. They've been working on this, um, historic preservation play.
Right.
Yeah, also. It's a dummy, I'm planning to develop it, we're, um, and we're, we're very, very busy.
Wait, I do have, I will find it.
What?
Um, we're, we want to buy a dish pan, would you?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and what else? They have rescinded, this is the Bates House, lovely. And, and a hundred, we put hundred thousand dollars for, um, engineering for, um, keep city basketball.
Do you know the dish pan is?
So you know that road.
It's up on Clapham, you know, where, um, what, what's stucking, what's the new road?
I don't know.
It's ready, so it's, it's in that area already.
It's before, um, Parrish Trail.
Yeah, which is, yeah, so it's, it's kind of.
What is it?
It, Mar, she, it what you, you could skate on at one time, she can't anymore.
And in Nevada, you should be.
Sure.
So, and then the Bates House, yeah, could cost a lot of money.
It could cost a lot, yeah.
But if anybody else about here, this is the great thing.
Okay, so we're, we're very, very busy, next time you have the zoning public hearing continued, which you will have, hopefully, we get a revised grant for the board. Um, and we also have a public hearing for the new Haverly Elementary School. So that will be a long night, um.
Have, have your eyes have been issued?
Yeah, we have stuff in the office, I haven't sent it.
Oh, you haven't sent it, okay.
I mean, if you wanna pick up your hard copy, you're more than welcome to take your hard copy.
No, I just didn't know if I missed it.
No. And then the twenty seventh, you have the continuation of three forty Ganet, and you have a new, um, Amrock Village Overlay District Special Crown House. And that's why I couldn't continue in late, you know.
Well, we know.
So I, I've been very busy and, um, you know.
For the two republic comments, I was asking, we, I think we did it the last meeting, where we said we give you an hour for public comment. Can we do that, or that's not?
Well, I do that, definitely helps, like, unless we're gonna hold it to an hour.
Okay, so that's.
So I think that, um, everybody had a really big schedule last time.
Yeah, I just foresee, like you said, Karen, like that A D U thing will probably be discussed in the school circuit, right? I'm guessing there'll be a lot of people here for the school, because we sound like wanting to.
I, I would think there's gonna be a lot of people here for the school, but I mean, I'm hoping that we can close the public hearing for the zoning next time.
Yeah.
I mean, if not, I don't know when we're gonna continue it, do?
Yeah.
I mean, because I'm trying to put the zoning first, so that your minds are all fresh. Um, and so, um, you know, it's gonna be done pretty much by March thirteenth, because the warrants will have color prints, so.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I know when, that when the school went out to vote, that, that next to our neighbors, all of that curses, they all showed up in favor of it, so I'm assuming that one of them will be there.
Yeah, well, seeing I'm, I'm, I'm there, I would say, yes, we're in favor of it, but we don't want what happened with curses stays to happen.
We would not wanna let that happen, it, well, we tried not to let that happen the last time.
And the other thing was trying to vote on Saturday.
Yeah, we have to vote on Saturday. For the social vote check, Marsha was to come in, so it's a, every town, that's part of that, it's, it's a plan. But you're voting for a new school.
We're, that's what.
It's a new, that's not, we are, yeah. You're voting for a new social vote check school.
Yeah.
I want, if our, care.
You don't want to.
I don't know that.
For one, this school is having to cost.
Well, there is presentation. Yeah, if you want to look at the presentation, the numbers that they're voting out there, the cost, I think, two hundred and seventy six million. I think, I think the number was, they're getting reimbursed a hundred and eleven million. And then you have all the, all the towns, I, I mean, I haven't seen any numbers for the town, but I haven't looked either, I haven't looked. It is all about numbers, it's, it's an hour already.
Well, I get that, I just mean, this is one more half.
Yeah, please, the likes of.
Nobody ever mentioned this before.
No, it was, it was presented last, it was presented last year.
Nobody ever put any numbers.
Yeah.
Like when we were voting for the other thing, oh, this is another one, it's been a long time.
Yeah, and here's another twenty, yes, okay.
Yeah, well, I believe the superintendent did present at the town, not most recently, but last May, he was doing rigorous presentations on the financial plan and on the building design. So there is, if there is a PowerPoint out there, that at the vocational school website, where he breaks down the costs to each town.
Oh, okay.
So, do you know what it is?
I, I can get that for you, I'll mail that to you, I don't have it on the, off the top of my head.
So, well, no, like a hundred dollars probably. I think we can end the meeting, this, this is pertinent to. Yeah, I know, okay, all right, so I want to take a motion.
Second.